Proper notice.
The County Board of Supervisors' January 16th meeting notice and agenda was posted in places, posted on the county website on January 8th, 2024, and was published in the legal newspaper the week of January 8th, 2024, published on January 11th. In addition, on Monday, January 8th, 2024, at 10:46 a.m., the Office of the County Clerk distributed copies of such notice of meeting to supervisors and media via email or mail. And the notice of amended agenda was posted in the government center, posted on the county website, and copies of such notice of meeting were distributed to the supervisors and media via email or mail on Wednesday, January 10th. That complies with the open meetings law.
Okay. Sounds good. Roll call, please.
Brad Olson.
Here.
Doug Rowdy.
Here.
Steve Worndal.
Here.
Ryan Wood.
Here.
Tracy LeBlanc.
Here.
Dan Ruck.
Here.
Barbara McAfee.
Here.
Jeremy Hall.
Here.
Kim O'Connell.
Here.
Amy Middleton.
Yes.
Here.
Jay Luke.
Here.
Denise Lalié-Pre.
Here.
Russ Arkand.
Here.
C.J. Simmons.
Here.
John Bonapres.
He's there.
Yeah, he's here.
I got you, John.
He's listening. I don't want...
Okay.
Would you... I mean, a touch of allegiance and right after that, we'd like to amend in silence for Joe Dammeling that passed away. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thanks a lot. I know Joe would appreciate it. John has got a few words for Joe at one of our meetings because he'd like to recognize his service to the country. In motion on the agenda, please. All in favor?
Aye.
All over the same side? Matters offered for adoption of consent agenda.
I'll make a motion.
Second.
Motion made and seconded. Any comment on it? All in favor?
Aye.
All over the same side? That was with the amended portion of resolution on the district change in the Baltimore Lake as you have a copy of it. Public comment, three minutes per person. Not 30 minutes, any comments? State your name and where you're from.
My name is Abigail Paulson.
Okay.
All right. I am a data analyst here in the county, but I am commenting just as a community member of Polk County. So my name's Abigail Paulson. It's lovely to meet you all. I've been a member of Polk County since I was born, pretty much, and I'm here to talk about the resolution to ban the fentanyl test strips. So as a data analyst, I wanted to bring up the data regarding fentanyl test strips, and I know I don't have a lot of time, so I want to tell you four facts that I'd like you to consider while you are talking about this resolution. The first is that 84% of overdose deaths among youth, which is 10 to 19 years old, are primarily caused by fentanyl. The second, provisional data shows that the number of fentanyl overdoses in Wisconsin grew by 97% between 2019 and 2021. The third, among test strips users, 36.5% of them use them most or all of the time, and 80.6% get positive results half the time or more. The fourth is that a study in North Carolina involving a community-based fentanyl test strip users showed that those who test positive are five times more likely to change their drug use behavior in order to reduce overdose risk. Now, that's a lot of numbers, but what do those numbers mean? And so what those numbers mean is that one in three fentanyl test strip users use the strips almost every time they do the drug. And of those users, when they test positive, 80.6% of those are positive for fentanyl. And each of those users who get a positive result back are five times more likely to change the way they interact with the drug in order to reduce their risk of overdosing. That means that Polk County, if we distribute fentanyl test strips, has a likelihood to change the way Polk County drug users interact with their drug. Because if they test positive for fentanyl in their drug, they are very likely, well, five times more likely than someone who doesn't, to change their behavior. It means decreasing risk, risk-taking behaviors, and increasing safety for our community members. And I'm asking you, as you discuss this resolution, to remember, one in three users frequently test their drug, and a positive test makes them five times more likely to change the way they interact with that drug. Which means that fentanyl test strips not only support public health, but support law enforcement's...
Three minutes. Thank you for your time.
Yep.
Anyone else? Any more public comment? There are none. We'll move to... Post resolution. Resolution... 0224.
Motion to approve.
I'll second.
Have a motion moved and seconded to approve? Insurrection?
Motion to amend.
Chairman, let.
Go ahead.
I make a motion to postpone indefinitely resolution number 224, to support the law enforcement and ban fentanyl test strip distribution.
Your proposal is...
I make a motion to postpone indefinitely.
Motion made to postpone indefinitely the resolution. There are second.
Seconded.
Seconded by Doug.
Right, go point of order then. We didn't even have any discussion.
We're discussing it now, aren't we?
Rules of order indicate that in order to have any discussion, there needs to be a motion to bring it to the floor. There's not been a motion to bring it to the floor. There's been a motion to approve.
Saying that again, what did Mr. Olson do there? Is that bringing it to the floor, motion to approve?
Your rules of order...
Discussion.
Right, your rules of order indicate the debate will only begin after a motion has been made and seconded to bring it to the floor.
Oh, isn't that what he did right away?
There was a motion to approve, not a motion to bring it to the floor.
I would say that everything we've done maybe the last 12 years has been incorrect.
That's accurate. Nobody's ever called a point of order on it.
I'll withdraw my motion and make a motion to bring to the floor.
The motion was brought by Brad and seconded by him.
I seconded this motion to bring it for discussion.
And we are in a discussion mode of that resolution at this time.
So where does that put that motion? If he would...
We've got to act on this motion first.
Right, if he changed it to a motion to bring it to the floor, and then the second, then now it's time for discussion. So then there can be a motion to postpone indefinitely. If there's a second on that, that has to get voted on first because it's a subsidiary motion to the motion to bring it to the floor. But if that doesn't pass, then you discuss.
Do we also have to vote on his motion to withdraw?
No.
So we...
Another point of order. He could not take her motion. He'll say it's out of order that we want to discuss first.
He could rule it out of order, yep.
Okay.
I'll rule it out of order at this time and listen to the discussion.
Here's Doug.
Doug?
We in discussion now?
We're in discussion.
I've sat at several meetings and been told how evil these strips are and how they need to be banned because it's going to increase drug use in Polk County. And is there a way to quantify that? I don't believe so. Therefore, the next thing is, if the strips get banned, and we just listened to an excellent discussion, and even one drug user had the opportunity to use these strips in Polk County that are legal, then I can't vote for it. I have to vote no, because whether it's for law enforcement or not, I have to vote my heart, and that says, do not vote for this. Because they should be, they should have the opportunity to go to the Health Department and pick them up if they need them. I guess that's my point.
I have a concern about governance. The precedent that this sets for one department in our county to dictate the work of another department in our county, it doesn't feel like that's our job to play referee or to say, we'll support the work of this department over that department. It seems like it's a strange role for us to play. And I also have a concern, as fentanyl increases in our county, I don't want the blood on my hands for the people who are not going to make it because they didn't get to test their drugs before they used them. And they're going to use them because they're addicted to them. And so it's not just their life that's at risk. It's also every death affects the families, the children, the neighbors, the community. And I think we can do better than that. Our citizens deserve better than that.
Anyone else have comments? Ryan?
So first, I'm going to apologize a little bit because it's going to be, it is written down now. When I wrote it, it was off the cuff, so just bear with me on that. But this is something that I read at Public Safety and Public Works, so I just wanted to bring it to the discussion here. First thing being that, as a parent of young kids, my wife and I always put the emphasis on stopping illegal drug use before it starts, which should be important for everybody in our house. We commit to creating an environment where our kids are raised in a way where they know the dangers and consequences of drug use. Kids are three-in-ones, this is a little bit hypothetical, but it's what we will do. And they're going to avoid those behaviors as a result, is our hope. However, that does not change the fact that other individuals are still going to choose to use illegal drugs at some point in their life. In addition to the efforts from individuals, family, and law enforcement to keep illegal drug use from happening in the first place, this is where we've learned that harm reduction strategies come into play in order to help save lives. It's important for us to consider the broad support for this harm reduction strategy. The Badger State Sheriff's Association, a bipartisan group of legislative sponsors of Senate Bill 600, decriminalizing fentanyl test strips, and most recently, our colleagues here within the county that presented to us multiple times about how harm reduction strategies are part of a plan to address substance abuse. These groups voice support for using fentanyl test strips, not as a way to condone illegal drug use, but because despite what we've heard from people trying to ban them, there is zero evidence that test strips increase drug use, but as a way of saving lives of those who will still make life-threatening decisions despite our best efforts. The language in the resolution was chosen to frame as if you oppose this resolution to imply that you're voting against law enforcement and that agency. In reality, voting against this resolution, we do not oppose our sheriff or his tireless efforts to keep our county safe, but instead, we stand in solidarity with a collaborative approach to working as a team to tackle this complex issue. Rejecting the resolution aligns us with a broader evidence-based strategy that combines law enforcement efforts with public health initiatives. We shouldn't overlook the potential health benefits of fentanyl test strips, even if it means just one person is kept from dying. These tools can prevent overdoses and save lives, which should be a top priority in our response to the drug crisis. In ignoring harm reduction, we risk missing critical opportunities to protect our community. So, however colleagues in here, I ask that we recognize that a vote against this is not a vote against our law enforcement, but a vote for a balanced, informed, and collaborative approach to a crisis that affects all corners of our community. Let's work together, combining the strengths of law enforcement and public health, to ensure a safer, healthier future for the county. Recount of something I'd already stated at Public Safety and Public Works.
Thank you. Any other comment? Kim, go ahead.
So, we're going to hand these out, we're going to protect, we'll do all this. Are we financially responsible for this? I've got some flyers that the state sent out. We have to buy insurance for this. We have to have a minimum million-dollar liability insurance to hand these out. I mean, did we look at the financial side of this? Somebody tests it and still overdosed, is that our fault? I mean, we got to look at it in every direction we can. So if somebody still goes out and kills themselves, and they say they came to the county, they tested the strips, and they still overdosed and died, is it the county's fault? Do we know that? Can we be sued for that? We're handing out free safety, and all of a sudden, how safe is it if they still kill themselves?
Counselor, you had an opportunity...
Do we need insurance for this?
It's under the Good Samaritan law, so no. The answer is no.
Same as...
Okay.
Same as Narcan.
Yep. Thank you, Counselor. Go ahead.
Mr. Chair? I do have a partial answer. There's a really nice packet that is available on the Senate website for SB 600, which is a decriminalization of fentanyl strips, where they talk about the liabilities, and there's tons of information there. And I did write this down, the cost of one strip, that's from manufacturer and training and everything goes, and distribution that goes with that one strip is less than a dollar. Okay? And those funds are available through the state in addition to certain grants for organizations and et cetera. What I would like to say is that, I just have a few things that I actually wrote down here, but I don't even know. I too agree with Ryan. I come from a law enforcement, a first responder and military family. In law enforcement, in the last three generations, we have 125 years gone. Currently have two, my only god nephews are law enforcement officers, one that works for the DEA in Madison, Wisconsin. I also have a very close, personal friend who is a Republican-elected sheriff, county sheriff. And I spoke with them about fentanyl strips, specifically trying to understand how law enforcement sees them and getting a different perspective. He said to me that he approves of the use of the fentanyl strips in the way that the state has designed, and the Department of Health Services has designed their program. He considers that he protects his personnel. He sees it as helping to protect his personnel's mental health, and that includes first responders. And one of his top goals as being a leader is to prevent any death from happening. He says when his officers roll up on an overdose and have to use Narcan, if that doesn't work, they're pumping and blowing. And by the way, in 2017, they had four kids, and this was like, this was a long time ago. 2017 was a long time ago. I think we can all agree. I was much younger and prettier then, less gray hair. But when four kids bought what they thought was Adderall, got together in a basement, took the Adderall, they all overdosed. They were Narcaned, three of them came out, and one of them did not. So you, so you know, I'm sure that I will get confirmation from our first responder EMTs in this room, that when you roll up on something like that and you're working on somebody, you are going to work on them until you get to the hospital, because deaths don't happen in ambulances, correct? So now you have all of that mental situation that your first responders and your police officers had to deal with. Now you have a sheriff or another representative that has to go and inform the family that, sorry, your kid overdosed. And then that same officer probably is going to have to do a press jonk it, explaining that whole opportunity. And now we've got to get the mortuary, and there's a ton of resources that go into that. So he says fentanyl strips is just one tool to help minimize all of that, all of those resources and the potential mental health that these young overdoses can affect various people and the communities, too. Let's not forget having to deal with accidental overdoses in a community. I'm speaking, you know, as Jelly Roll, who testified in front of Senate the other day, said, could you imagine the national media attention it would get if they were reporting that a plane crashed every single day, killing 190 people? Just think about that. Try and wrap your mind around that. So we lose 190 addicts a day. So what is this saying? Is this saying, is this saying that, okay, great, they're dead, we don't have to deal with them anymore, they're losers? And then he goes on to say, because it's 190 drug addicts, we don't feel that way because America has been known to bully and shame drug addicts instead of dealing and trying, dealing with and trying to understand what the actual root cause of the problem is. And I will close really quickly, Mr. Sheriff, again. To say, the same folks I'm hearing that want to support this resolution, or the same folks, or a large portion of the same folks that did not want to participate in the opioid suit, that cost us two, over $2 million in funds that we could have used for recovery, education, and enforcement. And to put your head in the sand and say, we don't have an opioid crisis, we have a meth crisis, is just plain ignorant of the fact that if we have meth, we have fentanyl. If we have anything, we have fentanyl. Because it's in everything. And sometimes, pills like Adderall and OxyContin and other types of those drugs, you can't tell the difference between them and the real thing. So how are you going to know if you're getting fentanyl unless you test it? And I understand this gentleman right here, that put himself out there, Scott Cobb's, put himself out there and talked about struggling with addiction, specifically with meth. Does he know that fentanyl is in meth? Does he know that fentanyl is cheap? They're making their product more potent so that they can sell it for more money and not have to, their profit margin is bigger. And not only that, guess what's addictive? Marijuana isn't. I don't even think meth is addictive. It's a slow ruin of lives. But I don't think I've ever heard of anybody dying from acute exposure to meth. I might be wrong. But you will die from a little tiny bit of fentanyl. That's all I got to say. And as soon as you're ready, Jay, I would like you to entertain my motion.
Comment?
I'll spare you the somewhat rambling thing I said at the Public Service Committee meeting, but I'll just say that I'm voting in favor of this. I have never met a risk mitigation strategy that hasn't done anything but exacerbate the underlying issue, and I'm not believer. So I'm going to be voting in favor of this.
Anyone else have any comments?
I have something to bring.
You go ahead.
I'll be voting against this resolution. And part of the reason is, it's an emotional thing for me, I hope I can get through it. But, you know, as first responder, we deal with these things out there. You know, my pager goes off, I leave my house, I go a short distance down the road, there's a 24-year-old mother laying there on the floor. We work on her. Her kids are telling dad, oh, mom will be okay. She'll be okay. Well, you know, she wasn't okay, you know? I've known that family, I know the parents of both, and I know the grandparents of both. And if there was any chance that that girl could test that before she took it, and I don't know why she took it, it's none of my business. But if there was any way that she could have took that, I'm sure, you know, tested that product, she would have, because she loved her kids, she loved life, she's a hard worker and a good person. So, you know, I don't, the addict, you know, they want to test it, don't test it, doesn't make no difference. It's the occasional user, the housewife, the student, but having a bad few days or whatever causes them to look at this, that I'm more concerned with. So I think test strips are a good thing. I've done a lot of reading on them, and I'm going to vote to legalize them in the company.
Jerry?
I just want to echo what Steve was saying. So I've worked busiest EMS agency in the state of Minnesota, about an hour from here. It's very personal, and I don't think that we see the problem in Polk County that I see at my place of employment, but I think it's coming. Things are getting way more potent, very serious. Dealing with opiates is a totally different response than dealing with a methamphetamine addict. It's two totally different drugs. They act totally different on your body, and I think we're, it's a very fine line. It's going to be very personal to a lot of people in this area.
Go ahead, Amy. Any more comments?
Two of us holding out here. Go ahead, Brad.
I might as well listen to you so I can respond to everybody at the same time.
That's what I was thinking, so go ahead.
I got one more, then. I'll let you both think on it for a second.
Point of order.
Go ahead.
Yeah, I'll go ahead. I don't disagree with any of what's been said here tonight. But having said that, having watched the Health and Human Services meeting from December, when I hear us say that harm reduction is a reduction in harm and also consequences, that's part of the reason. There is no consequences for doing drugs. It's not the Sheriff's Department's fault, that's not even necessarily our fault, it's probably our judicial system's fault. But having said that, if we're going to make it easier, Mr. Cobb's or whatever his name is here, you know, he can't get off of drugs, but apparently, I believe I read in there, he can't get a ride anywhere to get help. So maybe we need to look at this from a different angle. Maybe we need to help that drug user who wants to get help somewhere, get a ride. Maybe that would do more than his fentanyl test strip. And it isn't that you can't get a fentanyl test strip in Wisconsin, you can get it from the state of Wisconsin, or maybe other places. But is this really the county's spot to step in and say, let me help you do drugs, illegal drugs safely? Because I don't think there's a way to do illegal drugs safely. I take issue with the fact that, you know, one of our supervisors tonight said meth is not addictive. I just, I can't believe somebody would say that, because it is so addictive. Ask anybody.
Point of order.
Never mind. Keep going.
And, yeah, I don't want blood on my hands, but you know what? I don't want blood on my hands because somebody stayed on drugs way longer and then somebody else's blood is on our hands because of that. else's blood is on our hands because of that. I just think this is bad policy for the county to be asking, to be putting stuff out there that people can stay hooked on an illegal drug longer. There is better ways, there is cheaper ways of getting them help and getting them off. And maybe that's a simple ride for drug rehabilitation somewhere. I don't believe this is going to keep anybody off of drugs. And, and really, at the end of the day, do we believe that diehard drug user is actually going to use some of his meth to test it? I think that's a very, very small chance of that happening. So. Go ahead, Amy.
Anybody else? That hasn't spoken? Go ahead.
I just had a couple of things that I had wrote down too, but I wanted to provide everybody update on our Health and Human Services Committee meeting. When we had this in our committee, under our rules of order, like we saw tonight from council, we did not have a motion to bring it to the floor, therefore it died in our committee. And then it went over to Public Safety, Public Works, and that's how it, it got to here. So, but we all know that the county board, we, we did our work up there on that poster that said that public safety, reducing crime, substance abuse are our top two things. So we know that that is our top priority. And in order for us to move this huge project forward, we need all of our departments in the harness pulling together. We don't need one department out of step with another department and we need all hands on deck to kind of push this forward. And so we need this collaboration to happen between our departments where the sheriff's department helps the public health department and vice versa, and they do. But this resolution has put the board in the middle of that mix, mix. And so I think it's important for us to not have our departments working across, and that's what this resolution does. Other counties, I've been asking other counties on this, and their collaboration. So there's this collaboration going on between, and we do have collaboration between our sheriff's department and our public health department on a lot of things. And to me, when I'm looking at this sort of big picture from like the committee perspective, this is, I'm going to vote no on this, but I think it's an opportunity for us to say, okay, let's figure out what we're going to do. What are we going to do that we're not doing? And I love this guy's letter because a lot of the stuff that he says he needs, rides, health insurance, da-da-da-da-da, we actually have going and maybe we need to beef it up, stuff like that. So our, our, our essential priority roles are achieving our priorities and protecting our communities. And so I want all of our departments doing that together. And so because they're the subject experts in these fields, it's not for us to be in the middle of this. And obviously, like the rest of everybody, I would love if we could get people to stop using illegal drugs. It's not going to happen. But if we can save one life, if we can avoid one EMS deputy rollup on a, on a drug overdose, we've, we've done our job. And, you know, I think about the mother who, I, I didn't even know this story from Steve, but I was told another story of these people who might need a hit, da-da-da-da, trying to get recovered. Recovery takes five times of relapsing. And so if we can get people through, and that's on average, if we can get people through that period with test strips among another, among a number of things, we can get that person maybe to recovery. That's, you know, so our job is to make people's lives better. That's our job as county board people. And if we have deaths, we're not doing our job. So I'm voting no on this. Thank you.
Anyone else have any comment on this resolution?
Mr. Chair, one thing I forgot.
Go ahead, Ryan.
I made my first comment was, this is a little bit adjacent to what we're talking about. We've already gone back and forth on the efficacy of fentanyl test strips, whether they work or not, whether we should have them or not. But the other thing I want to talk about with this is, let's get rid of politics, state and national politics in this county boardroom. We have no reason to be sitting here talking about this as long as we have. How many revisions of this? We got another one today. How many revisions of this resolution have we gotten? We've never had the updated version until a meeting has started multiple, multiple times. And the reason is, is because every time, part of the political language gets taken out. It looks like every time, if we could look at the revisions, it looks like the mentions of anything, you know, state or national politics related gets taken out to kind of water it down a little bit, remove the politics, remove the politics. So we might have removed the text of the politics from the resolution, but it's still a political resolution. And I'm not going to throw anybody under the bus, but it was disgusting at Public Safety, Public Works, when I heard somebody mention, somebody was being explained, aside from the meeting, about something to do with the study that we keep referencing in regards to fentanyl test strips. And somebody who's very critical in all of the, a centerpiece in the discussion of all this, said, it's just liberal ideology. Let's get rid of that. This has nothing to do with liberal, conservative, or frickin' alien. I don't care. Stop bringing that stuff into county politics. People out there don't want it. So why do we feel like we can bring it in here? So with everything that's been said about the effectiveness and everything, we've all got our opinions and everything on that, let's do our best to keep this room clean of that kind of stuff. Thank you.
Anybody else have any comment on the resolution as it can be presented?
Roll call vote.
Call for the question. Let's call the question.
Just to be clear, you're voting on the, the version that left committee? Nothing that has been passed out tonight because there's been no amendments to it? So you, just so you're clear, you'd be voting on what came out of Public Safety, Public Works? Which is in the packet?
That was, that's the one we're looking at.
Right, okay.
I just.
That's the one we've been discussing, 224. All of our discussion has been about that resolution.
Is it, is it still there then?
My understanding was that was a proposed amended version, but there was no motion to amend.
There was no amendment. This was the resolution that we voted on, 224.
In our pack, yeah.
The one that's in our packet is the one that came out of Public Safety, is now in our packet. We've now been discussing it for 15 or 20 minutes or more, and we're going to vote on it.
Denise, Denise.
Chair, will you forget me?
I didn't forget you. Go ahead, make your, make your point.
Want to make sure that I get this right. I make a motion to postpone indefinitely Resolution 02-24, support law enforcement, ban fentanyl test strip distribution.
But that motion would have had to have been made prior to the motion to bring it to the floor. That, that's the issue. There was the motion to approve, and then you made your motion, but because then there was a motion to bring it to the floor and that was seconded and debated, that, that motion is no longer in order.
It's out of order, yes.
But she did, she made the motion a long time ago.
Long time ago. Right, it should have.
What do you mean, a long time ago?
So they can make a mistake and get, get their, instead of a vote, I, I just.
There was a point of order called.
I think the.
Chair over. And so that's, that's where we're at. We're at the point where.
I was thinking the.
That's out of order.
Okay.
As my, I understand the rule. We are calling for a voice or a roll call vote on the Resolution 02-24.
Doug Rowde.
I couldn't hear.
Doug Rowde.
No.
Dave Wondell.
No.
Brian Wood.
No.
Tracy LeBlanc.
No.
Dan Ruck.
Yes.
Barbara McAfee.
No.
Jeremy Hall.
No.
Kim O'Connell.
Yes.
Amy Middleton.
No.
Jay Luke.
No.
Denise Laliapre.
No.
Russ Arkand.
Yes.
CJ Seminis.
Yes.
And is John Bonapri still there?
I don't know if he's, his vote is no, he said.
Four, there are four votes for and 11 votes against.
Resolution 324.
Motion to approve. Second.
I mean.
Motion made.
We have ordered that, bring it to the floor.
Thank you.
I mean, do we have to, we should have a committee of the whole then and decide how we're going to run our committee meetings in this meeting? If all of a sudden we're playing a game when this, bring it to the floor, not bring it to the floor, we've been doing it like Russ said 12 years, all of a sudden now it's different today?
If, if somebody.
We should find out how this.
Sure, if somebody calls a point of order.
Are you?
In, are your rules of order, parliamentary questions of parliamentary procedure are decided by the chair in consultation with, with the corporation council. So if nobody calls point of order, because you guys act like you're in committee of the whole almost all the time. So it's, it's up to someone to say, hey, I don't think this complies with your rules of order. But having said that, at the April meeting, the new board will be able to set whatever rules they want and amend this and make, do whatever you'd like. And this board is going to be making recommendations to that future board. So those are conversations we can have both at committee and here. But, but you're right. I mean, if nobody looked at the rules of order and nobody calls point of order.
Make the proposal.
So do we need two motions on every issue then? Motion to bring it to the floor.
Right.
And then we debate it? Then we need another?
Unless you make a motion to bring it to the floor and approve. I mean, it clearly says in your rules of.
Bring it to the floor and approve.
And then does that need a second? Yes. So it still needs a second.
I mean.
I talked to Sarah. I talked to Moe. Somebody screwed up. What's to discuss here? We have to have this person. We have to have this person. They have to have them here full time, so.
Point of order. We're not going to discuss.
Motion on the floor.
That's, the motion has been made on Resolution 324, to approve the motion. Now, you want to bring it to the floor for approval?
I'll have, I'll make a motion to bring it to the floor so we can discuss it then. As it was, it was a, was it made in the first launch?
That's the way it, it was the last resolution as we went through that, with all the pros and cons, we did that this way we've been doing it for 20 years that I'm aware of. Now, how do you want to do this resolution? Make a motion.
Do them both.
And the motion is what?
To bring it to the floor motion or to approve it?
I don't know. What's a motion that you?
Bring it to the floor and approve.
Do them both at once.
Yes.
Both in one motion.
That was what I have as understanding.
Yeah.
And it's been seconded for discussion. All in favor?
Aye.
I'm asking for discussion now.
But you already just, there was a person bringing to the floor to approve a second. You said all those in favor.
I was just bringing it to the floor.
For discussion.
Okay.
I'll draw my point of order.
Well, you got me a little confused, but.
Everybody agree you want to talk about it?
I think we're talking about it now. That's just my hunch.
I think we'll postpone any conversation in reference to the point of order until we clarify it in with another committee. Another board, I should say.
Okay.
So I want somebody to bring 324 to the floor.
I think we did that.
For discussion. That's what I was understanding, that's what I asked.
Yep.
And I got a, a motion in that respect and a second.
So who is the clerk recording? Because there was about four or five people.
That's right. That was the problem that everybody was having, including me.
I.
And I'm sure Johnny was.
Him and Russ? Him and Russ to bring to the floor? I understood.
I'll talk about it.
All right, any discussion?
Point of order, I mean, does that get voted on? Bring it to the floor? What if it fails to come to the floor?
If there's no.
Discussion.
Right, there would be two.
All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Aye. Go ahead. Ayes have it.
Yeah, you know, I don't know, you know, we had fill-ins in these departments, trying to run departments. I don't know what happened with the budget process, but it got really screwed up. And we cannot have a part-time surveyor.
No.
So that's why most of them came forward. I talked to Sarah about it and I talked to Moe about it, and that's why it's here. So.
Can I ask you?
Next one as well.
All right, go ahead.
I'd motion to approve. Second.
I just had a question though. Did, have, how long have we had a part-time surveyor?
You haven't.
Oh, 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 okay.
Always.
Okay.
Any more comment on this?
A motion and second to approve.
All in favor?
Aye.
All the same side? Resolution 0424.
Motion to bring to the floor for discussion.
Second.
You need to go.
The motion has been made to bring Resolution 424 to the floor for discussion and seconded.
Vote on it.
We know we got the second. All in favor?
Aye.
All the same side? Okay, discuss it. Who wants to make, discuss this resolution?
Kind of similarly to surveyor position in regards to Balsam Lake and the other lake districts, backlog of zoning issues is kind of a nice way to put it. And we need somebody who can act on these things that people are bringing to us that need attention as far as the zoning department goes. I learned that in the past, we've issued, taken action, I guess I'll, I'll say, we've taken action on these zoning issues much quicker. And in the last however many years, these things have piled up, which then results in people giving us calls about things they've got going on on the lakes, particularly shoreline issues and things like that, that they're saying, what the hell are you guys doing out there? These people are running rampant with no oversight on anything and we keep trying to get a hold of you guys and nothing's happening, nothing's happening. So I look at this as kind of letting go some of that pressure and relieving some of that pressure and addressing some of the things that need to get attention sooner than later from the zoning department. So I think this is very needed.
Any other comments?
This is a long-term addition to staff, from my understanding. This plays a larger thing on our.
Right.
Well, the budget question is, is interesting. I think there's an anticipated budgetary hit this year, but there's a hope that it's budget neutral because of the revenue this position will bring in. And I think either Sarah or Don might be better to be able to speak to that because never trust a lawyer's math.
But that's a cost recovery method.
Yes.
On permit issuance.
Permits and other.
We don't generate revenue or cost recovery based on complaints.
With zoning violations, they do.
I think it's to a certain point.
To a certain point, correct. With the, the data provided by Environmental Service and the matrix done by finance, it looked to be actually budget positive in the second year, but it'll take a little bit for that person to get going in the first year to start bringing back in compliance. This was a gap in service that was noticed quite right away by Sarah McCurdy, our new Environmental Services Director, that's, that's needed for this gap in service.
And then I guess my other question is kind of directed, so in the interview process, we talked about our service to outside people and how there aren't, of return timely and stuff like that. Is, are there other issues or are there other ways to alleviate those issues besides hiring an additional employee for each department? I guess I, this is kind of concerning to me. I think that we're just over policing and I, I don't think, I think we can do a better job maybe at prioritizing the calls that we're receiving.
I think you're, you're talking two different, two, two different items when you talk about customer service and calls come in for permits issued versus the issue we have with people violating ordinances.
Yep.
This person, we have enough calls coming in from lake, lake districts and. This person, um, we have enough calls coming in from least, lake districts and, uh, towns that need help with ordinance control and that, that this person's not going out and looking in windows and things like that. But there's, uh, enough on the docket and plenty of calls that come in that we have to follow up on that just aren't getting followed up on right now in supporting our towns and our ordinances. You know, the customer service is calling and getting the permits out is one aspect of the zoning office. You know, getting the proper permit, getting them in there. Compliance is a whole nother, i- is, is a separate part of that, that encourages, once you increase the ability to get a permit and know that there's teeth and accountability in those permits, um, people being in compliance, um, if you don't have that piece of it, it becomes kind of loose and people know there's no accountability, so why go get a permit? So they're not going to call anyways. But this is a gap that will come in, um, budget neutral with that on there. But again, this isn't, um, that we're policing. These are, these are, um, compliance issues that are, that are ongoing, coming in with concerns from towns, people, lake districts is that we have enough on the dock, and correct me if I'm wrong, Sarah, um, with the workload that's out there, that this is a, a tremendous gap in service.
And what more teeth does this provide to send somebody else looking faster at it?
It's actually follow-up and follow-through to close that loop where you don't have a code compliance issue that goes for a long term that doesn't get followed up on, and you reach a certain point where that same concern comes in and you start from square one again. That's what I sent another letter because we missed our gap in our window to, um, put that through.
I think it's a matter of having teeth or not having teeth. Because as of right now, if I'm a resident and I'm giving a complaint for filing whatever I need to at the zoning office or something that's going on, say on Antler Lake or Balsam Lake, I'm just not getting any response to the reason I'm calling in. And then a certain amount of time goes by and I have to start that process over, and meanwhile, the problem's gotten worse or there's an additional problem, and you just comp on that over and over again. You just keep getting told, we have, we're working with a skeleton crew, we can't address it. Now, if this person's in there, they can just address the problem and follow up through the process that the county goes through when the complaints come in. It's just a, you know, a missing person.
Anybody else have any comment?
I have one.
Let him know.
Been on environmental services for a long time. We give out conditional use permits, and I've come in and talked to Bob, I've, I haven't had a chance to talk to Sarah yet, but she knows I'll be coming, is that we give out these conditional use permits and nobody ever goes back and sees if anything on our list was done. And, and you drive down the road and you look in and you say, they were supposed to have a, a fence at that spot to control, they don't have it, and they haven't had it for years because they know nobody's going to come back again. And then why do we, why do we even write them then? All right.
Anybody else have any comment? Denise?
Is it, is this going to help with the nuisance properties that are scattered throughout the, like the severe nuisance properties?
Talking about un- unpermitted, um, like junkyards?
Yeah, like-
Yes.
Welcome to Polk County. Yeah, there's a couple of those. Welcome to Polk County. Cross the line and they're out. Okay, good.
Anyone else? Question's been called.
Has there been a motion to approve?
Motion to approve?
Motion.
As presented?
I'll second it.
Motion made and seconded to approve. All in favor?
Good ask, John.
We don't have anybody to point at this time from the county board. Chairman, does administrator have any appointments?
Not at this time.
The chairman's report has, uh, pretty well been discussed. There's, there's nothing new to, to report on at this time that I think, uh, I think that we need to, uh, reprise the board of-
It's going to be a February, February meeting.
Pardon?
Is there going to be a meeting in February?
Well, I was waiting to hear from all the department heads, uh, if there was a issue with, on their departments. I've heard from, uh, Human Services is the only one that has, has indicated that they are not having a meeting that month. We discussed a little bit of general government.
We're not having a meeting unless we have business to conduct.
And the normal board meeting would apparently fall on election day, so you'd need to change the date of that meeting.
Of the board meeting for general government because of, uh, election.
County board meeting.
Because of general, uh, the election primary. So I, I don't know if it's, I would like to know whether or not we have a, a consensus , uh, majority to, uh, cancel the February county board meeting. If there's any committees that may need to meet, they can go ahead and call their meeting without any objection from, uh, from us. So I think I'd need a motion to suspend the county board meeting for February. Is that appropriate?
I think you can just cancel it for lack of business. As the chair, I, I, I think a consensus from your folks would be a good idea.
All right, we'll cancel the February county board meeting.
How's Africa?
Still here, three.
Still with that hammer still. Hammered more, hammered out.
I don't want to do this, it makes too much noise in my phone, Johnny's-
Right, his ear.
He leaks an ice.
Announcement from any supervisors.
What's the administrator's report?
Bones is chomping.
Phone administrator.
I thought you made a comment.
Just, you're, you had a question.
Oh, you were talking about me. Go ahead.
Just a couple of things I put out at some of the committees. Uh, county sales tax was up for, in twenty-twenty-three, four point two percent. Good for our budget. The highway department now online, you can tell people that on the website, they have an online report for road issues such as bottles and culvert and safety issues. So you go online, you can fill out that form and click You're Not a Robot and get contacted back from them. Uh, the final on the Justice Center roof, um, came in, we budgeted two point six million dollars for that project. It came in at two point four six five, two sixty-two, so that was, uh, good. Um, County Road B was budgeted for twenty-twenty-four. That was from thirty-five to Atlas. That has been delayed now to twenty-twenty-five, uh, due to the archaeology study not being in time to get the lighting out. So that'll be pushed to twenty-twenty-five if people are asking. Letter should have gone out on that. Uh, the grandstand, the grandstand for the fair discussion meeting, the first one is set up now for, uh, January thirtieth at nine AM. And Supervisor Warren Dahl and Chairman Luke, myself, Rod Polk, and the fair board will be meeting on, on the grandstand, um, after we have an MOU signed right now. Uh, currently staff is updating the personnel policy, and that'll be coming through committees here shortly, uh, wage study and getting that cleaned up. We have some contradictory language in there, so we're getting that cleaned up. As long as we're in January of the twenty-twenty-four budget, just to let you know, the twenty-twenty-five budget calendar will be coming out in the next couple of weeks here. So we're going to start that process all over again, uh, coming through with that. And the last thing I have, Claire, if you could bring up those slides, um, is health department news. Um, from our health department, um, our health department went through an audit in November of this year, audit that does every, um, every five years. And coming out of that audit, our health department was deemed a level three health department. That's the top health department level in the state. Uh, next slide. What that means is our health department, there's, um, three levels. It's determined by, uh, administrative code one forty. It was created in nineteen ninety-eight and updated in two thousand nineteen. It's reviewed every five years. So this review went from two thousand eighteen to two, twenty-twenty-three, which if you weren't aware, we had that little thing called a pandemic in the middle of all that stuff. So, um, this slide here tells you everything that a health department has to have. This is everything for like level one, surveillance and medical control, health promotion, human health hazard control, policy and planning, you know, reporting. Uh, next slide. You go to level two now, uh, they add in workforce development, quality improvement, performance management, and embedded public health nursing services. Uh, next slide. To get to level three, you need all these other things, and our health department has this. Uh, leading data collection and local public health planning and decision, public health expertise, data research. They do a lot of outreach and have a lot of programs. Focus on impacting public health, the population health. Um, I'm not the expert to talk on any of these. If you have a lot of questions, we have people in the room that are experts, Helen, our health officer, and Tanya back there, very proud of this. Um, social determinants of health developed, put in place, advocate for policies and addressing, um, that word at this time. Determinants of health. Um, next slide. Again, this occurs every five years, and yeah, it was at time from twenty eighteen to now they did this. And I sat in on part of this audit down there, and it was a room full of public health people and full of state people with computers just barraging staff with questions and how do you do this and what do you do for this and do this? And, uh, Tanya and her team and Helen and her team did a wonderful job at that. It was very interesting. Uh, state and public health, key findings determine level three status as evidenced by meeting all requirements of level one and two, in addition, providing services including commutable disease, chronic disease, injury prevention, environmental public health, maternal-child family health, and access or linkage with critical health care. Serving the community as health strategies, including leading data collection, sharing research and expertise, advocating for policies, addressing social, social determinants of health, having performance management and quality improvement plan. We have a really good health department. We have a really good health department, so my hands off. My hat off to Helen and Tanya and her team, and I just wanted to make sure that they were recognized at the county board level that we do have a great health department, so
All right. Now, supervisor, do you have anything to comment about? Go ahead, Mark.
I, um, I'm going to be bringing some information from Dunn County where they're partnering with West Cap to create some workforce housing in partnership with, uh, using some of their ARPA funds. So it's a, a collaboration between West Cap, their developer that specializes in green building, and, uh, at Dunn County. So I'm going to be talking to my colleague from the board who mentioned it, and I'll be bringing that up into resources.
All right.
And this board eventually.
Quite an item.
Something, uh, from the Economic Development Corporation. Does anybody, how do you shorten West Central Wisconsin Regional Planning Commission in conversation? Yeah. So West Central Regional, was, Central Wisconsin Regional Planning Commission, um, the EDC is kicking around putting together like a housing summit where they're going to kind of educate local stakeholders. So hopefully municipalities, like people, decision makers at municipalities are going to get a little bit of a crash course on everything that is being offered because there was stuff that I had no idea about as far as assistance and programs in revitalizing different properties for housing specific projects. And they're kicking around doing, you know, EDC is doing really good work as far as, um, just using all, everything that they have available to them to improve a lot of different things for the county. And so that's something that they're going to have coming up. So EDC's got a lot of good stuff going on, thanks to Terry Hauer and everybody that's
That it?
That's it.
Okay, anyone else have any comments? Russell?
Yeah, one more thing.
We have to bring it to the floor.
Do it.
Not debatable.
Same.
Motion to adjourn.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
All the same.